Okay.
Probably.
Call the order, the Ellsworth Planning Board meeting for July fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Introductions, please.
Nelson Gill, member.
John Delia, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Hingy, Alphate.
Seeing as there's four of us here, Mike will be voting. Adoption of minutes from the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. Are any changes or additions, deletions?
Move that the minutes be accepted.
Second.
And made official.
All in favor?
We're moving.
Yep. Next item on the agenda is revision to an approved subdivision entitled Stone Park.
There's minutes for the nineteenth.
Yes, many minutes have already been approved.
Oh, oh, that was the thing. I'm sorry. Okay.
Revision to approved subdivision entitled Stone Park for applicant owner Branch Pond LLC. Proposals to construct a thirty by sixty in-ground pool in the northwest corner of the property. The subject property is approximately two point five six acre lot located three seventy-seven High Street, tax map sixteen, lot sixteen, in the commercial zone district. Introduce yourself, please.
Andrew McCullough, engineer, and John Bates, the owner, is also here. And John came up with the idea to provide an amenity for the residents of this apartment building that would be an in-ground pool, and again, as we've shown in the northwest corner of the property. And so that is what we have proposed. The... It's, and I know there's no, it's either, there shouldn't be any gray. It slightly impacts one parking space. And so we created two parking spaces in oversized islands that we have on the plan nearby, so that there's no net loss in parking, as has previously been approved. And the other, it slightly impacts the impervious of the project or the, yeah, the impervious or the developed area of the project. The impervious remains well below the seventy-five percent threshold here. And I've noted that percentage in the application. Excuse me. And in the original plan, the plan that was approved, we had the stormwater coming down a curb on that northerly side and then into a ditch before it flowed into the underdrained soil filter. So this pool essentially is in a portion of what was shown as a ditch. So we are going to continue the curb around the corner of the prop, of the parking so that it directs the surface water to the underdrained soil filter as we originally designed. So I did look at the stormwater model to, and to verify that there's no change in peak flow off the site after this pool. And there's no negative impact to the underdrained soil filter by change, essentially increasing the time of cons, no, decreasing the time of conservation, time of concentration just a little bit. So the water's gonna get to that underdrained soil filter a little bit faster because it's not flowing through something that's grassy. It's flowing now across pavement, but there is no net impact.
So where, let me just interrupt. Where is that underground? Is it on the backside of the pool?
It's in, it's in the south. The underdrained soil filter that I'm talking about is...
Is that like between?
It's all along that westerly side, and then it goes, it goes all the way to the south end. That's what's underdrained soil filter three.
Wait, where your pen is? Yeah, so the, I mean, the elevations decrease a little bit towards the pool, so that water would go around the pool?
It comes around, it comes on the, on the pavement side of the pool. Yes. And then, if you can see, there's a contour elevation just south of the pool, there's a contour elevation ninety-eight. So there's a low spot right there.
Yep.
So it drops into the swale, if you will, right there. Right after it gets by the edge of the pool.
Yep.
And then it runs down into the underdrained soil filter.
One other question I had, I don't know if this changed, but on, you show the grassed area future parking if required, and then to the east of that, snow storage.
So?
And that's, that'd be where the waived parking places are.
Correct.
If it turns out you have to put those parking places in, where would that snow storage?
I believe the wording that we had discussed in the review was that if this, if the additional parking has to be built, then we would have to hold the snow off.
And that's in the note, note one. So no, 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 be removed from site required, because that's what that's referring to? That, that new parking is put in, the snow off to get?
Up in the upper left-hand corner of the plan. Yep, we had, we had put a note in there on that.
But Lori says that two or more parking spaces needed in the reserve future parking area, but you talked about one.
They, they said we just thought it was a waste of paper, but...
And why was, and why, I was disconnected from what he said and the, and the two extra spaces?
So I think...
Why, why were the two more spaces?
I think on the original approval, we may have done some bad math, and we're missing two spaces, so the request was to just have them out.
Ah, okay. So it was just a correction.
Just a correction.
Good, because I couldn't for the life of me think why we would need two more for a single pool. You're gonna have company, right?
Probably.
I got, I, I think it's a great idea. John, would you anticipate tenants of your building inviting over a whole bunch of people to come swim, which would then put a burden on the parking places? I mean, do you?
Well, I hope not. I mean, that's, it'll be for guests only. I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't know. It's a very good question, but I, I don't think so, no. I mean, I would hope that people would honor the, the honor, you know, honesty policy.
I mean, maybe the lease will say swimming pool for tenants only. I don't know.
For guests only, yeah. And we'll have two keypad gate entrances, so you'll have to know the code.
Okay. Because it doesn't look like around the pool, around the thirty by sixty. I mean, it looks like on the south or the north end is five feet of the pool, concrete or pavers and...
It means like walk in, get in the water, boom.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of...
The south end is where there's a little bit of space there to sit.
They're gonna have lounge chairs.
And it looks like five feet, five feet, and maybe ten, and then fifteen.
I mean, that's, that's what I had in order to try to fit it in with the parking.
So it's not really designed to have a whole bunch of people there?
I would hope not, yeah. I mean, it's really truly just an amenity for the apartment building, so hopefully they stay to that.
And maybe at some place you could put the snow.
You know?
Just get ready for next season.
Just saying.
Do a nice bath or something.
So I had a couple of questions for you. Is there going to be any kind of a structure for water filtration, water purification? Or is that all underground? Or what are you gonna do about, about that? Is there something you're gonna build in it?
So their domestic water obviously comes to the building, and from the building, we tee off from that domestic water.
Yep.
Underground.
Yep.
To future tie into the pool.
Correct.
And so most of that will be serviced in the utility room of the, of the apartment building.
So you're, so the water filtration and sanitation and stuff will be in the building? So it's gonna recirculate back, I mean, you're gonna have to recirculate that water to keep it somewhat?
Yeah, that's a question for the pool guys. I don't know.
So that was my question. Are you gonna have to build a building on top of this, or some sort of a structure to house that?
I mean, if we did, it would probably be on the fifteen-foot, you know, concrete area.
Okay.
Are you talking about like a little pool house?
Yep, well, for maintenance purposes.
Just a little building for...
If you have to get in there and vacuum stuff, that maybe somebody poops in the pool. You're gonna have to clean it out somehow.
You're allowed to say that here?
I don't care.
But yes, then the answer to your question is probably yes. We'll probably have to do a small, you know, little structure to hold that stuff.
Okay.
If there needs to be some. The company that, Atlantic Landscapes Contracting, with a company that does a really good job on pools, I don't even know who it is, so.
All right. Is the water line metered for the pool, or is it that's filling the pool? Or is it just strictly?
You mean metered separately?
Yeah.
I doubt it. It's probably just gonna be, you know, off our domestic meter.
Okay. And it's, and then the pool drain goes to where? If you have to drain it?
It's, again, I don't know. Question for the pool guys. They have it all calculated and specked out and...
Okay, because I, I didn't see any discussion in the TRT as far as from the water or the wastewater as to where? Because I'm sure that water has to go to the wastewater system somewhere.
They didn't mention anything in TRT, so I wasn't thinking about it.
Those are just questions I wanted to pose, just in case.
Would it go into stormwater or would it go into wastewater?
Probably go into wastewater.
Have to go to wastewater.
It's our first pool, so I don't know.
You don't have a pool at your own house?
No.
Oh.
I'm next to Branch Lake. That's God's pool. As good as he gets.
That's all I have.
And you're, this is the fencing around the, around the pool?
Proposed, yeah.
And you said two, like, electronic locks to get through?
Gate entrances, yep.
Okay. Just like, safety is gonna be lit for after hours? I'm assuming that intended, posted to that risk.
Yeah, we'll probably have some, you know, again, good question. I'll probably have some operational hours, you know, close at nine P M, I think.
We had, you know, in the original lighting plan, we don't have lots of lighting out there, but we do have enough for safety purposes, if you will, in the original plan.
Just thinking, it's a nice fence. It's good and bad. Kind of the bad is you can't see through it, right? No, really. If there was like a kid in there having trouble, you'd have to hear it because you can't see it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, good point. I hadn't thought about that.
Would you anticipate having any type of camera system within the apartment house itself?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah.
That you could put a camera on the pool?
Yeah, we plan on having, I can't remember the company we're using, but they're gonna do the whole facility. And of course, now that this has been added, they'll add that. I'm sure we'll have a couple of eyeballs out there.
Any other questions? Any issues from the staff?
No, they addressed the parking and provided fencing.
And I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody online, or, I mean, this is not a Zoom meeting, right? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on, on someone?
I make a motion that we accept the revision to the subdivision entitled Stone Park for applicant owner Branch Pond LLC for a thirty by sixty in-ground pool.
Second. All in favor?
So you're gonna invite us over for pool party? Is that like some sort of perk that we're not about to ask for?
Jay Darling already has his Speedo all ready to go.
Oh, brother.
Way to discourage people.
Oh, brother.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Matt.
Item number four, discussion regarding the update to chapter fifty-six Unified Development Coordinates to comply with the upcoming real challenges in LD two thousand and three. Changes will involve increased density for affordable housing units in certain areas of the city, updating the definition of accessory dwelling unit to match the states, and creating a processing system for additions of new dwelling units on the lot, in other words. When does an accessory dwelling unit need to go to planning board versus not? This is just discussion on which articles within the chapter fifty-six make sense to house these changes, and no action will be taken.
So hopefully you went through the presentation that I sent over from the state. This kind of covers the basics of the changes that are occurring through LP two thousand and three. It has three major areas. There's affordable housing, housing density area. There's a, just like, single-family housing density dwelling unit area, and there's an accessory dwelling unit section as well. And so the major changes for the affordable housing section, again, this is something that Ellsworth doesn't have to cover at all in our current ordinances, in my discussions with the state. They said, you know, become of a non-answer, but they said like different towns have done differently, but I suggested putting in our performance standards, which would be Article eight. They said that they've been hearing from other towns that that's probably like how they're gonna go about it. I think that makes the most sense. There are some towns that are looking at doing like an overlay zone specifically for affordable housing, which could be good and bad, you know, it kind of gives you control over where it goes. But like in the ideal spots, like our downtown, there's not like a ton of land, so you may be discouraging it from happening at all in the city, which just, he doesn't need at least some of it. So it's something to think about, but likely, either way, if it's just a performance standard, it'll just go into Article eight and then have some changes to definitions, like we don't define affordable housing. We'd probably include the definition that matches the, the standard set by LD two thousand and three, which is the, if you're renting, it has to be priced at eighty percent of the median income of the area. And then if you're buying, it's gotta be priced at a hundred twenty percent or less of the median income. And so just defining that out more clearly, and then, and that standard, the performance standard, you provide the twenty-two point five percent or two point five times greater density. And then the parking standard, you probably explain that in Article eight as well, and then maybe in Article eleven, put a reference to Article eight. That's our parking ordinance, just directing people, but have it all housed in the same spot. And the other part is, if they're gonna be affordable, they have to have like a deed restriction stating that they must be priced that way for thirty years. So that's another requirement that would go into the performance standard. That would cover the affordable housing section. It's probably the biggest change, but it's pretty straightforward, and the state provides pretty much exactly what we need to go into that. The next section?
Back up just a second. I, you said that the rentals would have to be based on the income at a certain level, eighty percent?
Eighty percent, yeah.
So who actually, is that another job for code enforcement?
No, I mean, likely, these are gonna come before planning board, so they'd have to be able to provide us the numbers when they come to planning board for affordable housing to say that, you know, here's what the eighty percent of the area median income is now, as defined by HUD.
The developer would do that?
They'd have to, yeah, to get like...
Really?
I mean, you're talking, you're talking about the rents being a maximum price depending on income, correct?
Right.
So who, who would oversee that, make sure that it's happening?
It would, that would be code, I suppose, but like in the application, they'd have to put that in a deed restriction, that it will be priced at these levels, whichever it is for rental or for purchase. And then if it's broken, then code would have to go, or put a note on the plan.
Is that, is that what other folks are doing, having their code people or whoever make the, that determination locally? I mean, it just seems to me that, that that's something that the state should be, be doing, is saying, you know, in this area of this zip code, here's what affordable housing is.
Well, HUD has the standards, so...
Right, but, but, but the HUD is based on percentages of median income and stuff like that, right? And the median income, for example, median income here in Ellsworth is a hell of a lot different than the median income in Bar Harbor.
Right.
I'm pretty sure. You know, but the point is that, you know, again, is, is Ellsworth gonna make that determination? I would, you know, I have, I have enough difficulty with that, let alone having the developers make the determination on a one-by-one basis.
You mean, so the determination of what affordable would mean would not come from the developer? The median income will be determined by the census statistics?
Ah, okay. I think that's the answer to the question.
I think that's every ten years.
And the census is updated every ten years or so?
Yeah.
That seems sort of problematic.
You think?
Yeah, I do.
It's a common comment.
Well, you know, for my money, you, I, you kind of need to clarify how that's determined.
Actually, in the presentation, it says that HUD updates theirs annually, so it would be defined by HUD.
Do they, but do they, do they define the median income for Ellsworth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do they?
Well, not specifically Ellsworth, but probably this, this area maybe.
I'm sure they do it statewide, but the question is how fine do they do it?
I think they do it probably by county.
I was gonna say, probably county. I bet they get...
Wow, a lot of variance within the county.
But they do it by national census.
I imagine that's where they're getting a lot of their statistics from.
But they do it, they, it's not a matter of them updating it every ten years like the census.
Right. Oh, no, and they could do, I mean, they could, you know, they sample and they could do it more often. Anyway, would be good to have that just a little more tied up.
Yeah. Well, there's, nothing's tied up right now.
I get that.
And it's not really gonna affect Lori.
Yeah, that's right.
Ten months and eleven days.
But who's counting?
It does make me think of statistics at Hussin though, and
Oh, yes.
the vast outliers skewing the data for...
I, I don't even know how I would approach it, to be honest with you. I'm sitting here...
With one family making two billion dollars, which there probably is.
Oh, yeah.
But doesn't move the median very much.
Median's like fifty-five K.
Might move the average, but doesn't move the median, having just a couple outliers. But the whole town of outliers is...
People, I think there's a whole island of outliers.
Oh, yeah. I don't know why, I don't figure that out. Anyway. Seems that there's a bit of fog that could be, that should be dissipated as we go further.
For sure.
So I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Can you explain to me, I guess I'm just not, either naive or a little bit...
Are you jumping ahead to a section that's not affordable housing?
No, no. So when you're looking at the number, under the number of units, and as I go back to page, page thirteen, it shows affordable density bonus under four, forty-three, sixty-four, up to four dwellings, forty-three, sixty-four A, and ADU, forty-three, sixty-four B. So there's three different applications to this thing, from what I'm seeing, that can apply. So one of the, under the four units, one of the things it says is served by public water and sewer or a comparable designation, and it's, I get two, two points, two questions here, any municipality without a comprehensive plan. So the fact that the municipality has a comprehensive plan, does this apply? And/or what is a comparable designation to public water and sewer? How do you compare, what is comparable to public water and public sewer?
You are getting ahead of affordable housing, but I can answer your questions. So our, even though our comp plan is outdated right now, the state says that for this law, it still applies. So our growth areas that have been determined in our comp plan will still be used. So that'll be, pretty much all of that is connected to public water and sewer. So that's what we'll be using. But in terms of comparable to public water and sewer, they do define that. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but it's like it has to have a water system, private or public, that serves like X number of people in a certain amount of way, or X number of dwelling units in certain way, in a certain way. But that's what...
But this will apply to outlawing areas that have low density, right?
This will not, the up to four dwelling units portion, but again, that's getting ahead of the affordable housing part, so...
Okay, sorry. A pox on my house.
All right, sorry, I gotta head, yeah.
Yeah. But that wasn't for affordable housing, really, just, so I guess, you know, we're gonna work with Rabin and Mitchell on this because the state has a program to reimburse municipalities for ninety percent of their expenses to make these changes. So Elizabeth and I are keeping track of our time, and then we're pulling in Rabin and Mitchell for a more active role.
Keeping track of our time too?
Yeah, your volunteer hours, yeah. And then we can get reimbursed on the backend part, so. So second part was about just density for single-family homes. Again, a lot of this Ellsworth already does pretty well. So in the first example they provide, where it shows different density requirements for the different number of units. So like if you had one unit, you only need ten thousand square feet, but if you had two units, you need thirty thousand square feet. Ellsworth already doesn't do that. We already have a standard. If you have, you need a certain amount of space per dwelling unit. Like, that's our density per acre, essentially, how many dwelling units per acre you can have. That's already consistent for one, two, three. It scales equally as you give more dwelling units. So if you needed an acre for a dwelling unit, we already have it, where if you had two dwelling units, you need two acres. So we don't need to change anything in that part. Now, this is a, the number of units allowed may change. So talking to the state, this part kind of confused me a bit because someone would still have to follow our density requirements. But again, I think, I think so, I think we're okay in this one, but it was a little hard to understand why this was a requirement. I guess there may be other municipalities that don't do this, but, so our ordinance doesn't prevent a certain number of dwelling units outside of the density requirement. But this is, so, but saying you're allowed to have up to two dwelling units just on any lot, if it doesn't have an existing dwelling unit, it would still have to follow the municipality's density requirements. So it's kind of a weird law. I guess like some people, some places just have laws that say you can only have one dwelling unit in a certain zone or something along those lines, but we don't. And then if it is, sorry, it's two dwelling units if it does have an existing dwelling unit. It's four if it does not contain an existing dwelling unit, but it is within the growth area. So they're still have to follow density requirement, but again, in our growth areas, most of the zones don't have a density requirement, so we would have allowed four dwelling units anyway. It's just a matter of space on that lot. So they still have to follow dimensional requirements.
I mean, do we have a designated growth area now?
Yeah, it's really the, again, from the old comp plan, it's the urban zone, the commercial zone, the, all the zones essentially around that urban core. Make that, if I can provide a map of it, well, it's in the zoning map. Anything that's not rural, essentially, around the downtown is in our defined growth area from the old comp plan.
I did have a question or thought about density, and this may be a little off your presentation here, but it seems like a good time to bring it up. This came up a couple of months ago with the application we looked at. So we've got, I think that was rural density, but there was a density rule that said for X number of units, you had to have Y amount of square acreage, basically, which sounds good on its face, makes sense to me. I understand, or I think I understand the spirit of it, and that's where my question's going. But it seemed like, looking at that case, let's say you had X number of units you wanted to build, and the requirement was ten square acres, right? But you could put all those units, assuming you meet setback and everything. You could put all those units in one square acre and then like append field or forest, and it meets the requirement. So I'm curious if in everybody else's mind, that matches the spirit of why that rule was originally enacted. It's never sat with me right since that meeting.
You're talking about a cluster subdivision, like, style?
Yeah, I guess.
Or like, because we have a tool in Ellsworth, I don't know if everyone else has it or not, but where you can do a cluster subdivision, where you get a density bonus to your development, but you have to then provide offsetting common area space so that like the total area, the density matches, but your lots...
And that's kind of what I'm going, was that the spirit, that, that for this tight cluster of homes, the spirit is that they should have a giant shared backyard, and that was the spirit? As opposed to the spirit is, you're, you shouldn't be able to reach out with a fishing pole and touch your neighbor, right? And I'm trying to understand which was the spirit under which that rule was...
I think the spirit was the first one. I mean, it's like a plan, what, what, we call it other places, a plan unit development, where you have, you know, this big thing, and you say, well, we could make this into a whole bunch of single-family house lots.
Yeah.
Or we could scrunch them all together, have a lot of green space and, you know, use the same area, but the houses would...
It still prevents you from doing...
But the houses would be closer.
Yeah, super-dense urban outcomes.
In fact, which could be served for super-dense urban, but yeah, right. In fact, what you could be served for super dense urban, but yeah, right.
Because I, in your city.
I mean, that's my view.
But I think we dealt with that, out off the Buckle Road is, okay, you have twenty acres of shared space, but it's a really usable shared space. I mean, it's not like it's a huge backyard, I mean, going out off the Buckle Road is wooded or half wooded, I mean, it's.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that we're not real strict on.
What the shared space can be used.
Yeah, and where, and where it is relatively speaking, because the one you're talking about was like, all the shared space was way the hell over there someplace, and all the houses were over here.
Which in context, in context of development, that shared space is closer to Branch Lake, so that's buffering the development from Branch Lake, but.
Yeah.
Just saying, there's a use for it.
The other.
There's a rationale for that? Not, not very strong with that, but.
And I mean, maybe something to consider is, and, and, and I've seen it done, and I don't think there's anything that prohibits it in the ordinance, but, you know, okay, well, there's an area that's ninety percent wetlands, ninety percent undevelopable by our definitions, and that becomes the common space or what have you. And, you know, I think you want to have something that is more usable, upland, functional, so that there is some value to it.
And I think that just speaks to some, some sort of tighter definition of this stuff.
Right, yes.
I'd say definitions areas, we're gonna take, we can get creative with that. I think that's the part that we'll have a lot of changes to as well, because we don't define anything really in the affordable housing section that they're requiring us to add. So, we'll have to be adding a lot of definitions, but we can tweak existing definitions as well.
But the impression I got though was that, you know, if I had a single-family house, you know, basically this allows me to go in and make another unit either in that house or attached to it, or even freestanding.
Yeah.
When I wouldn't otherwise have been allowed to do that, is that correct?
Well, again, it depends, like in Ellsworth, you probably could have done it. If you're just creating a separate dwelling unit, and so they gave different examples, where you're doing either attached, detached, or a combination of their, of, they're not supposed to be, they're not supposed to be accessory dwelling units, it's supposed to be additions to the existing dwelling unit, because.
You mean, physical additions to, to the dwelling unit, as opposed to.
Supposed to be a separate dwelling unit that has a primary structure of being a single-family dwelling unit. Because in the ADU section, there's a, there's a difference between the two, which is why there's two, there are two different sections, right? To follow the existing home standard, you can't follow this standard to build an ADU. The ADU will have its own separate standards later on. But this is for, to have a primary, single-family home on a lot, and then you can add another dwelling unit with the purpose of being a single-family home onto the lot. And again, you could attach it if you want to do like an in-law suite or something like that, but it's mainly, I think the idea was also largely be for detached homes, to put two detached homes on the same lot that originally you could only get one.
And these new ones that you put in, I mean, they can be really small, right? I mean, isn't there a number in there someplace that was like a really low square footage?
ADU section, so I think you're going into the next one.
Oh, damn.
But, or.
Was it little over there?
That one, so now, the minimum size is small, but we've, Ellsworth already has a maximum size for ADUs. So, yeah, it has to be, it can be, the ADU, according to this, can be as small as a hundred and ninety square feet.
Right, which is.
Which is very.
Pretty small, right? And that's, that's small even by tiny house standards, right?
Yeah. And then we, we set a maximum of fifty percent of the size of the primary.
One of the bottom, one of the bottom lines of this though is that you're in contact with other municipalities are dealing with the same issue. This attorney's doing something.
Yeah.
And also the state.
Yeah.
Does that pretty much sum it up? Okay. So, they will presumably offer some guidance in this.
But, well, I was, later on, we're done covering ADU, the, to schedule the joint workshop between you and the council, so the state can come and give their presentation, and then I can see it, get the lawyer to join on that day, and we can provide a, or part of the presentation.
Okay.
So, Matt, you're probably the most versed in this, if you're in the room, I'm gonna guess. I'm just, the very first line here, Governor Mills signed to increase housing opportunities in Maine by requiring municipalities to create new zoning ordinances. Sort of grossly speaking, is this going to massively affect Ellsworth and ordinances and the, and the plans that we see coming before us? Or is this targeted at other municipalities that have excessively strict ordinances that are preventing construction? So, where are we on this scale?
Yeah, we're very much in the less affected area, because we already do have like very loose regulation, well, loose regulations around density, but like we already have very open density, like a lot of our zones don't have a density maximum, like our urban and downtown zone. You can, you can have very small lots, and you can fit as many units on them as you can, as far as you, as long as you follow setbacks and all that.
There's, there's a lot of towns and planning boards grumbling right now, but Ellsworth is number one.
Right. I think our changes, again, like the major change is going to be the affordable housing, because we have nothing about that in our ordinance currently. Otherwise, it's about just tightening up, again, definitions of certain things and making sure we're clear. Like, our definitions are what we may have been referring to as affordable, ADU in the past now matches what the state's expectations of those are.
Thank you.
And, yeah, a lot of them probably won't affect the planning board in terms of ADUs, because most ADUs go through Lori's office.
How does this, how does this intersect, if at all, with regulations that we might want to develop on like Airbnb's and stuff like that?
We still can, the state put in here that this doesn't prevent municipalities from regulating short-term rentals. So, it would not impact our ability to do that.
But Matt, Matt, what's it gonna do for the true houses?
Probably helps them out, if they ever wanted to add more houses to their lots.
If, if we're adding, let's say, a second dwelling unit to a lot in a subdivision with a, already has a primary, single-family dwelling, then does that need to, I mean, in the past, technically, that's a division of land or building, if you will. Does that need to come back to the planning board for review under the subdivision criteria, or no?
It's something to discuss if the planning board like it to, but right, right now, yeah, it would come back. But the planning board could create an exception for the one single ADU to be added without revision to the pool subdivision plan.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there as a point of consideration, that's all.
As ADU, so what's different between adding another primary resident, resident and adding an ADU? Is that ADUs do not have to comply with the density requirements. So, you could add an ADU and throw your density off balance, you just count the primary residences.
And you said, I mean, the exception of the four units could either be connected or separate, and those could be currently on a lot in a growth, in a growth area?
Yes, so, the four extra units, if they're within a growth area, can be a combination of, you know, if you have an existing primary home, adding like an in-law suite, and if you have space doing, because again, it's also follow setbacks and density requirements, you could add three cottages or something in the back of the house.
Well, how does that, because, Mike, in the fire regulations, I mean, we just dealt with this, a duplex, the fire regulations are one, a triplex, you got.
If you go three or more by life safety code standards and, and building code standards, it's required to be sprinkled, if it's three or more units attached.
I mean, so it still has to.
That's only one, one of the three different categories you can add.
I'll say, if you're not, if we're not talking about the ADUs, if we're talking about the, again, the four units that are meant to be primarily residential, they have to come with planning board as a subdivision. And so, they'll have to go through that same process, where if they are, if you have an existing house, and you're gonna, you know, turn it into apartments, and you're gonna add a couple, like another expansion or a wing onto it, that becomes a new structure subdivision, and it has to come to the planning board, where it would go through fire code, those processes as it normally would.
So, I, I have a question, and maybe I'm missing something. On the ADUs.
Yeah.
Is there a specific definition of an ADU?
There is. Again, Ellsworth has to change to match what the state has, but Ellsworth does have an existing definition of an ADU.
It does have?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a pretty broad one, but we have.
That's what I thought. So, so I'm looking at, what page is this, page eleven under ADU, and it says that ADUs must be at least a hundred and ninety square feet in size, minimum. Hundred and ninety square feet. So, if somebody wants to add an ADU as a living dwelling unit, does that come, does that come into your purview, Lori?
It does, and our current definition has, one part of it is that it has to be a minimum of five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
And it can't be more than fifty percent of the size of the primary dwelling.
So.
That's the smaller wings.
Yeah, so, but I mean, if somebody wants to build another dwelling unit next to that, it has to be a minimum of five hundred square feet.
Right now, in our ordinance, I, I, it would obviously change with a hundred and ninety square feet.
So, you're talking about a really tiny house here of a hundred and ninety square feet, you're talking about a cracker box.
Well, how many square feet?
Ten by nineteen.
Ten by nineteen. Ten by nineteen.
Five hundred. It's not a tiny home.
That's five hundred square feet?
Yep.
Yeah. But now with this, it goes down to a hundred and ninety square feet, ten by nineteen. There are bedrooms and other rooms in the house that are bigger than that.
Do you have any sense of where that number came from? Is that some sort of national standard that?
I do not know.
That we're totally unaware of, because it sounds really small.
It is small.
Like, you see, it's like pup tents, right, around the back of the house or something.
If being small makes sense to me, again, the spirit of the thing.
Oh, yeah, small is good, but one ninety.
But one ninety is a weirdly specific number.
And it's weirdly small, and it's weirdly small.
I, I can understand it being a in-law apartment, or in-law living space, or something like that, but a living unit, a dwelling, complete dwelling unit of a hundred and nine?
With kitchen and bath.
There's no way, think about that a minute. You'd have to use the kitchen, bath, or whatever of the existing building, I, I don't know. A hundred and ninety square feet, I don't know how you live in a hundred and ninety square feet.
Well, how big are some motel rooms that have been transferred from motel rooms to short-term rentals? And out on the Buckle Road, that's all short-term rentals now.
Yeah, you're, you're the guy that has that camper thingy, right? Ten by nineteen?
One ninety's small for a camper.
No.
That's true.
It is.
I, I think I get what they're going for, I mean, they're lowering the bar to, you can build this, you know.
More houses, more houses.
It is a weirdly specific.
It is, I agree.
I wonder too where it come from.
So, that's another assignment, is where the hell did one ninety come from?
Well, these are good, I mean, we'll have the minutes, and when we go through and have the state come, and we'll prepare them with this.
Yeah, right, and I get that.
But it does say that we can set the maximum size, it doesn't say we can set the minimum size.
Correct.
Well, that's gonna, because that's gonna be, that's where you get exclusionary, of course.
Yeah. And I don't know if they allow like case-by-case basis, because again, most of them will go through the code office. But like, you know, again, like if it is just adding on a in-law suite or something that could be a hundred and ninety square feet, I mean, it's gonna have to be a dwelling unit, so it has to have bed, cooking, and bathroom facilities. Just would be a hundred, you have to fit that in a hundred and ninety square feet, so I don't know practically you do that. I mean, it may end up that, yeah, the minimum isn't a hundred and ninety, but to fit all that, it has to be like two fifty or something like that. So, there are other things that could impact the practicality of creating a hundred and ninety square foot dwelling unit.
You have to use really small hammers to it.
Your unit cost is gonna be very high. I mean, because you still have to.
All that stuff.
All the stuff, and to get that all in, I mean, you've got to deal with, you know, your foundations, or your thickened slab, and your structure, and everything.
Utility lines and appliances.
Utilities, expanding your septic system, what have you, heat. Your unit cost, your per square foot cost is gonna be brutal. At, when you're down.
And maybe, and maybe that's a function of some compromise that was made to get the legislation through. I mean, it's, you know, and it, and it doesn't have much basis in reality. It has basis in political reality, as opposed to, you know, I'll fix your house, baby.
If you bring in one of your small houses, I mean, does it have to be on a slab, does it have to be on a foundation?
It can still be on the chassis, on the tiny home, we just did a CO1 one today up off the Bengal Road, and it's on a chassis, just stabilized, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah, because I mean, I think a lot of the, you know, the, the structure, you know, like that Steve O'Halloran is selling.
Oh, yeah.
People convert those into houses, and I suspect a lot of them are just brought in and put on concrete blocks.
Yeah.
I, I suspect that they are, I hope they don't blow away, but, I mean, really, I mean, really, they're, you know, a foundation, a foundation is not only to hold something up, it's actually to hold it down, too.
Well, the house you're talking about, is that just up, just before the Cullen Road?
No, this is up on the Gowan Hill.
Oh, you're talking about that.
Oh, yes, that one off the left, right there?
Yep.
Is that five hundred square feet?
No, it's a tiny house. So, tiny houses are regulated to be four hundred square feet and under.
Oh, that's a tiny thing.
It's teeny, it's absolutely adorable, it has a little loft.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was talking about, when you said it was five hundred square feet, it seems that can't be five hundred.
No, not that one, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the one on Ridbridge Road. That was built right down from your street, from where you live.
Where is that?
So, anyway, to be continued, eh?
Six fifty-six.
So, how much work do you end up having to do to get this thing in, kind of in line with?
There's still plenty.
I should say, how much work does Elizabeth have to do to get this thing in line with the state?
She still has lots of work to do. Me, I don't have that much. No, but it'll be a, it'll be a brute.
But there's gonna be, I mean, there's gonna be model legislation that's fitting this, right?
No, but there are other, again, there are other towns that are working on it simultaneously, so.
A de facto model.
Yeah. Anyway, like I said, like, I have pretty open communications with some of those other towns and with the state, so, and the lawyers wants to help out. But we're, as far as our firm is going, we're the first municipality to reach out to them, so we'll kind of be the guinea pig for them to figure it out. But it's opportunity, and again, like, we currently don't have definitions of tiny homes or anything in our ordinance, too. Now, maybe a good time to look at that, if they're going to be allowed as ADUs, to define them properly ourselves. Again, they probably fall in line with what the state requires for them, but just to add it and update our ordinance to some newer, newer things that relate to this directly. That's all I have.
I just realized, we're the one you're talking about on print bridges.
Yes. I thought that's the one you were talking about.
So, when do you guys want to do a workshop?
August twenty-third.
August twenty-third, sure, is that Saturday?
I guess maybe check with the council.
Get their blessing first?
Well, get some input.
I'll send out an email about it, too, that Molly and Patrick can weigh in on the date as well. Yeah, so that's that for that.
That sounds like a job for Elizabeth.
That's right.
Coming up for the calendar or something.
I guess it's staff comments now?
Sure.
So, Rick had brought to my attention.
One more time.
The attention of John, and then Lou Patrick in as well, because he's a lawyer, about a presentation that was given to some of our harbor public committees on individual site visits to locations that are under review by the board. And, so it was nothing that you guys did, but we're gonna have the conversation anyway, just to make sure it's clear. So, apparently, there's a lot of issues down there about certain members of our board going to people's property, and kind of walking around and inspecting, and maybe being a nuisance.
Oh, so that was the genesis of that?
Yeah.
You mean doing it.
It's a hypothesis.
Doing it individually without, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And without, like, letting the landowner know they're gonna be kind of walking around on the property and stuff like that. And so, they had their attorney, who's our attorney as well, for Harbor, had their attorney come and give a presentation on individual site visits, and how the proper way to go about them is. And after talking to Patrick. And after talking to Patrick earlier today, we both think that maybe they were being a little cautious, so they're following MMA's criteria, which is always more cautious. So essentially, the attorney said that there should just be no individual site visits because it creates kind of a due process cloudiness or clarity. So like an applicant may think that they weren't doing proper due process by having a board member come onto their lot without their notice and what kind of conversations may have been had between them or anybody else on that property at that time. So, you know, it probably isn't likely to happen, but it just creates this thing that you don't want to have happen. But the main issue is because it wouldn't be on the record, the public record. So in talking to Patrick, we think that as long as the individual site visit comes onto the record, it would be okay. But we have to be very clear about what the rules are for individual site visits. And getting out and walking around someone's property probably isn't a great idea.
Communicated with and proved by the landowner, right, or the applicant?
Well, if you want to go on the land, but I wouldn't encourage doing that either, just exploring the property.
No, I'm just saying, we are not empowered to trespass, right? All this process aside, right? Like I don't have a badge I can whip out and just walk on anybody's property.
I think as one of the guilty ones, as well as my.
Me too, I mean, I go all the time.
I mean, I've never gone on a piece of property and wandered around, it's usually, okay, there's the lot. I might pull into what's the entrance road.
Road, yeah.
There's the drive-by and then there's wandered about the back.
I know, I've never wandered around.
And so the drive-by would be okay, but what we're, what I talked to Patrick about, he said was a good idea. And so that's probably what we'll do, if you guys are okay with it, is for any type of like drive-by visit, we'll create a standard form that gets filled out and you have to detail, you know, when you did it, what information you gathered from it specifically. And then just like any other notes about the visit, if you ran into anybody, if you talked to anybody, like if the landowner saw you came out and had a conversation. But again, I think most of the drive-bys you do are discreet enough that nobody comes out and is like, what are you looking at my property for? But just that way, it's on the public record, it'll go in the public file and then however many we collect for that visit, we share at the public hearing, whatever.
This thing that you said, where did that come from? Was that Maine Municipal?
I don't know, it's sitting in my binder of legal opinions.
Because the thing is, I understand what you said about the Bar Harbor thing, but, but again, my recollection from a long time ago is that when we went to, when I went to the training that was put on by Maine Municipal Association for new planning board, appeals board type people or whatever, that that's what they said there too. So it was more than just, you know, crazy zealots in some other town nearby.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean.
And I think the notification to the applicant, you know, usually for what?
Yeah.
Richard and I do, you know, it seemed to be okay, I mean, it's, I think it'd be unworkable, unreasonable to set a formal site visit.
Every time.
For something.
Oh, I totally agree.
Yeah, I mean, one of the times I went to the, to the duplexes that were out back of John Bates, you know, strip apartment on 1A, and it was, because the road comes out at an angle, like, okay, what does this road actually look like, you know, coming out on 1A? And that's the only reason I went there.
Right.
You know, something like that, I mean, I don't think anybody else really can.
Oh, right, no, no, but, no, no. No, no, I, don't get me wrong, I do those kinds of drive-bys or walk-bys or whatever all the time. You know, first of all, I don't have your encyclopedic knowledge of everybody's property in your damn city, right? You know, it's like, oh, yeah, my brother's uncle or mother has that property, and that, oh, okay. Anyway, so I do it all the time, but my problem is that if it really does expose us, and I think that the idea though of having some sort of policy or form or whatever, not too difficult to fill out, but you know. And to make, and to make sure that, you know, that we say that during the.
Right, as long as it's on the public record and the applicant have a chance to respond to it.
Personally, I feel a lot happier with that sort of thing than, you know, kind of a scribbled email that says, eh, no problem.
Right.
Just saying.
I wouldn't even be cautious about going by, as an individual. Even if I'm invited by the landowner to go on the land to see it, I have a problem with that. Because it's his word against my word, and it's, you know, I say something or he says something, he's gonna be the one that they're gonna look at more than anything. This comes, this comes from my fire inspector side and Lori can understand this. If I go do an inspection by myself and somebody says, and I've gotten into this bailiwick before, that they say, well, he said such and such, and I have nobody there to back me up that I didn't say that or I didn't do that.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think that contacting property owner developers is a good idea at all, so.
Yeah, I think if you want to actually go onto the property, it should be a publicly noticed, like full board.
Absolutely.
But to do a drive-by, I think, as long as we fill out that form and then we present it at the hearing.
Yeah, so some of this is the burden of bureaucracy, which is on you. Somebody's got to write this down and come up with the details and the forms. But I feel like spirit is the word of the day for me, right? I feel like the spirit of this thing is not what we're doing in Ellsworth, but something egregious that happened somewhere else.
No, I kind of disagree with you, but nonetheless, it's still an issue. It's the same issue.
You just need to be cautious.
But you know, in all the opinions that you got from the lawyers, you know, the word should was always used, not must.
Yeah, all right, because, I mean, that's the thing.
So even, so even they are saying, well, you know, maybe.
All right, because there is no direct rule about it, but it's just like cover your behind kind of thing.
Cover your behind.
So we'll draft the form, we'll send it out, and then we can talk about it more next meeting. Cool.
Anything else?
That's all. I got my hours for Nelson, everyone else is signing.
Yeah, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
And we've made it in less than an hour.
Wow.
Hot damn. It must be summertime.